Okay, good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, February 8th. The agenda for this evening is six o'clock Citizens Input, 6:05 the Town Manager, Finance Director, and the Foxborough School Committee will discuss the 2012 budget. At seven o'clock, we will go into Executive Session with the Foxborough School Committee about collective bargaining. At eight oh five, Jim Ruffey will talk about the Havred Pilgrim Road Race. So, the time being six o'clock. Jim, could you lead us in the pledge?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, in the name of God, liberty, and justice for all.
Thanks. So, the time being six o'clock, Citizens Input. I will ask anybody to please use the microphone if you want to come up. Dick?
I know you're moving into Executive Session later on the contracts, so it isn't an agenda item, so I just wanted to bring up a couple of points relative to that at this point. My last meeting with you, the agenda question came up. I didn't want to disturb any more water than I have to. Under the contracts that I had looked over while doing research on the OT accounts, several things came into being on them, which I think need clarification, if not outright change. We've talked for years about the raise issue and the COLA being part of the raise. If people would only spell out what COLA says. COLA is an adjustment for inflation. It is not a raise and it should not be considered three years hence as a clause for raising contracts as we go through them. That number should be set by the federal government, the Department of Labor Statistics, which does it every year for seniors. They might as well do it for teachers, for highway people, for police and what have you. Another major thing that I tripped over was the area of overtime, which I think needs, again, strong clarification or correction. Thirty-five years ago, the contract that we had only spelled out double time for the Water Department. It now spells out double time on Sundays and holidays or beyond 24 hours for Highway, Sewer, Water, some of the administrative people, the Board of Health, you know, there's a whole series of things in there, including people working in divisions where there is no double time provision in their contract. Example, there's one police employee that gets double time. It's not in the contract, but that person is tied into the contract for Town Hall and therefore is eligible for it, but is still a police department employee. That should be cleaned up. We either have it for everyone or we don't have it for everyone. I think that this needs to be cleaned up. The other end of the time and a half double time that needs to be cleaned up is why is it only time and a half for Saturday, double time for Sunday? If I'm the Seventh Day Adventist, my day is Saturday. Shouldn't I get double time for Saturday? Or is it a nonreligious issue and just some foment of someone's imagination? Why Sunday should get double time, but Saturday for the same kind of work gets only time and a half? Then there's another clause in it for double time, which is for a holiday Monday, you get double time. You're already getting paid for the Monday, it's a holiday. Then there's 11 paid holidays. Are the 11 paid holidays paid in addition to the regular time holiday? There's no clarification in the contract. These are all little issues which I think need to be cleaned up. My recommendation would strongly be time and a half across the board, some cutoff at the 24-hour point. We don't need people working 30, 35 hours with big machines on roads or chasing cars down streets or ambulances down the road. We need a closure on the hours that people work, a break to go home, get some rest, and come back. We have people that work 90-hour weeks with some of the event-laden stadium weeks that are there. Do you want to be stopped at three in the morning with a cop with a gun and a laser, a taser, and you give him a half a lip? I don't think you would. Or an ambulance rolling through town with a driver that's been working a 90-hour week. This concerns me. It's public safety, we should look at it, and we should curtail it and control it. The other option I'll get into when we get into the budget, which is why are we paying all this time and a half overtime? We need additional personnel. What does that cost? And I know Kevin and I disagree on the number of what that costs, but I can give you some numbers on that later this evening as well. So, I just wanted to broach the contract issues because I think they're important. The double time, the holiday, how some people in some departments get it and some don't. We need this cleaned up accordingly. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Citizens Input. Lorraine?
Jerry, I'll just...
I need you to... Thanks.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to tell you that I think that we, as a school committee, need to call the school committee meeting to order, so I didn't know when you wanted that to happen.
Oh, sure. Sure, yep.
Can do it right now?
Yep.
Okay, so we're going to open the school committee meeting at 6:10. Thank you.
Sure. Lorraine?
I just wanted to take a minute to recognize the Highway Department again. Kevin, if you could deliver the message to them. I was out a couple of weekends ago picking up my college-age son from the train station late Friday night, pulled into the center of town at around 11:30, and I couldn't believe the operation I saw going on while the town was sleeping. Giant hauler trucks and front-end loaders taking all the snow away, you know, well-orchestrated manner it looked like. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we extended a thank you to them again for the long hours that they've put in, and all their hard work is very much appreciated.
That goes out to all the public safety folks. I know that Skinner has been going crazy and the police and fire have been going nuts for the past couple of weeks, so it goes out to everybody that's been working on it, so...
I will relay that, and I know they'd be very appreciative that the Board and the public took notice because you're quite right, they have been working awful hard lately.
Just, nothing new to add, but just to comment on what Dick had said, or not the specifics. You know, Dick's been back here twice over the last month, and he's many more years than I have in town, but I've seen him on the Town Hall floor at just about every town meeting in one way or another, saying pretty much the same thing. Yeah, he's shooting your head, but it's, that's what it is. It's like Chipping the Iceberg, and you know, you say it and then you sit down, but I think, I just want to say thanks because what you're saying makes sense. I mean, there's a lot of details, we certainly can't do it in the Citizens Input, but you know, the process, you did a ton of work last time you were here, working with Randy and going through the numbers and the process for the town meeting reports and things, and I wish more people would do that, and I just wanted to say thanks because you do spend the time. A lot of times, it looks like we might not be listening because we move on, but if I can just suggest not to stop, and things are going in that direction, one way or the other, we are listening and moving towards and, you know, trying to get our arms around the recession and the budgets and the contracts. So, it's, you know, the short time that I've been here, I know you've made some progress on the last union budgets in going in that direction, so there is hope, and thank you.
Any other Citizens Input? Okay. The Town Manager, the Finance Director, and the School Committee to discuss the 2012 budget.
What we're going to do tonight, Madam Chair Member of the Board and School Committee Superintendent, is we're going to give you a two-part presentation. Randy's going to do part of it, I'm going to do part of it, which will go through the revenue situation as it has changed rather dramatically since last November when we first briefed you, the components of the operating budget that I will be proposing to you this year, and finally, the size of the gap that continues to exist in two plans, Plan A, Plan B, to close that gap. So, without further ado, we've got it on PowerPoint for you. The overall policy goal, as provided by the Board, was to attain a level services budget. So, a level services budget is basically defined as a budget that replicates all the services we provided the prior year. Now, since town government and school and education system is a service business, what that really means, in essence, is retaining all of the employees that we currently have because those are the folks who deliver the service. So, that was the goal. Now, we can't quite get there with the current available revenue, so something has to happen. When we get done with this presentation, we're going to show you that we're about $740,000 short of attaining that, but we have two plans to give you, either one of which will attain the goal. So, the additional policy goals, number one is replace all the current employees, as I said, so that they can maintain those services, except in places where we can provide the same service and potentially do it with efficiencies that might potentially allow for fewer employees, and we've identified at least one or two of those. Secondly, provide a cost-of-living adjustment to the employees over a two-year period so that over that two-year period, the two years being this fiscal year '11 and next fiscal year '12, because the contracts are not in sync, they don't all expire on the same date, but in one year, provide the employees with a 3% COLA, and in another year, provide basically a wage freeze, no increase. Now, for some employees, that means the wage freeze took, wage freeze will take place this fiscal year, and they'll get a COLA next year. For others, it means they'll get a COLA this year and they'll get a wage freeze next year. And some of that is still being negotiated, obviously, but that is the goal. Three, not hire any new employees unless we can identify a new revenue source that heretofore was not included. Look into regionalization and every, identify every opportunity that we can, and we've made some advances there. Look at innovation, and we'll be showing you some brand-new things that we're doing that I think you'll find very interesting. And finally, take a look at our department fees and be sure that, to the extent a service is provided to a discreet member of the public, and very often, that's not citizens of the town, that the fee, that the cost to provide that service is completely paid for by the fee, so that we're not asking the taxpayers to subsidize services that other people get. So, we've been conducting that review, and again, we'll show you as part of the presentation what we've achieved, and I think you will agree that it's been pretty impressive. So, with that introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Randy. This is what's proposed, 27.5 school budget, 12.2 general government, and fixed costs of 14.1 million. Randy?
Am I going to be hurt here?
Is he going to be okay, Frank, or...
Need you to come up here, I'll push buttons.
Let's make a deal. Hire. Great, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for pulling together this presentation, allowing me to take the wheel and drive it around for a couple of blocks. The numbers on the previous page total to a proposed budget of 50, approximately $54 million, which Kevin indicated is about three-quarters million shy of the resources we've identified to date here, but as Kevin said, there's a plan to balance that. So, on the revenue side, as far as tax revenue goes, the assumption here is that we would go with the allowed Prop 2 and 1/2 increase of, totals 814,000. New growth taxes is estimated at 365,000, so for a grand total of, you know, new tax revenue of almost 1.2 million. Whoops, I think, I don't think this is the, Kevin, I think this is the last version, is the last version on here?
Yes. Give me a minute, technical difficulties.
Once you take a two-minute recess and I'll fix this, I know what the problem is.
Frank, can you say?
Sure. Would you like it?
Stuff we can go through?
Technology.
Frank, I don't know if Frank took us up. We're aligned still? Okay. Why don't we take a couple action items while we're... We have the minutes, I don't know if we should wait?
Yeah, with three people, probably not. Probably not a good idea to go through the meeting minutes.
Okay.
And I don't think we want to squeeze the liquor issue into two minutes either.
No, okay, so we have the Town Council invoice for December.
Yeah, I went through this, and there's the three items that are on top totaling $5,400.
Yep.
And it was in order with all the other ones that we've been looking at. I don't have any, nothing jumps out on me.
We should just go ahead and pay, I think. I have one minor question about it, but it's not, hold up.
Okay. So, I'd entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 13th, 2011 invoice from the attorneys for $5,723.22.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Three zero, Pauline. And when the Mandarin Chef was in here last, we didn't do the Victurist license, we need to just approve that.
Really looked at the liquor exchange, yeah.
We did the liquor, but we didn't, we didn't make the motion for a vote on the, so I'd entertain a motion for...
Move to approve the common Victurist license application for Mandarin Chef.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Three zero, Pauline. And we have a donation from, for $110 to the Library Gift Fund from Newt and Evelyn Mom.
I'll make a motion to accept with gratitude the amount of $110 from Newt Mom for the Boyden Library Gift Fund.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Three zero, Pauline.
On top of that, I know the library's doing a March 26th, the fund, arts fundraiser at the Boyden Library, so you might want to look, if you're watching at home, March, I think it's a Saturday, March 26th. Yeah, it is the 26th.
Then we have donations to the Veterans Gift Fund for $250 from Ed Sheen, Senior Ian Junior.
I'll make a motion, again with gratitude, for a $250 donation from Ed Sheen to the Veterans Affairs.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Three zero, Pauline. And $20 gift certificate, gift certificate, sure. Having a raffle, don't you know. $20 donation from Lori Feldman to the Veterans Gift Fund.
Again, with great gratitude, Lori Feldman for $20. Make a motion to accept it on behalf of the Foxborough Veterans Affairs Office.
Second?
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Three zero, Pauline.
How's that PowerPoint going? Good?
Good. We, Randy is going to go, for some reason, it didn't save in the computer, we can't figure a lie, or we don't know where it went, and one copy of it won't, it won't open for some reason. So, he is going to go put it on here.
Oh, I thought it was going to go on paper. Okay.
What do you, just want to bring it on top of?
I don't have the, I don't have the correct version.
You've got the one you sent me.
It's all about the red.
With the green and the red? We'll use that one. We didn't say anything on there like...
Okay, let me go get that.
Kevin, why did you write such a dumb thing or anything like that? What we're going to do is, we've got a version that I had sent to Randy yesterday. He marked it up in different colors and corrected some figures, so we're going to use that one. That one's saved, but for some reason, it won't open, and like, don't know why, it opened fine this afternoon, but I can't get it open now. So, he's going to go get that one, and in the meantime, well, in the meantime, if we could just take a recess, he'll be back in a couple of minutes.
It's going to take a little bit.
Yeah, well, he's got to, he's got to put it, the thumb drive in, load it, and then we'll bring it back up and put it back in there.
Okay, we did as many action items as we can without...
Okay, well, I'd suggest you just take a recess.
Can we just take an intermission then, Frank? Thanks.
Intermission, we'll have popcorn and soda.
Yeah.
My apologies, but if you were watching when I was doing there, we were trying to bring the copy up, and it was saying...
Okay.
Great, so I'll be filling in some blanks with the numbers out on the, up on the screen here, I'll have them on paper here, and I'll speak to them.
Okay.
So, where we left off, the tax revenue from growth from Prop 2 and 1/2 and new growth taxes is projected at just under 1.2 million. The prior five-year average for growth taxes has been 945,000, and that's had a peak last year of about 2.2 million, another peak the year before that of about 1.1 million. The year that we're in right now is the low EBIT for the town at about 294,000, but over the last five years, it's averaged about 945,000, and our long-term average has been about 400,000. So, we're projecting next year, new growth taxes about 365,000, so still sort of below, below the average, so we're still not out of it from an economic activity perspective. And that does include some of the projects that you may have, I know the policymakers have been talking about and may have been written about, that does include those projects, it's just we add it all up, it doesn't get us over our average. So, 365,000 was projecting for new growth taxes for next year, and that's about a $580,000 loss compared to our prior five-year average. On state aid, Governor's House One budget, which is so far the, proposed budget, was so far the only one that we have to go off of this, at this point, comes in for Foxborough at about 8.78 million dollars net. Our total for this year was 9.06 million, so that's a loss of 274,000. The, this projected FY12 aid does include $543,000 of a one-time grant that is actually being given, is given to the school department and is graciously being shared by the school committee and the school superintendent, so we definitely want to thank them for that because that's going to be a big help to balance the budget.
Could I, can I just, one comment? I just wanted to reiterate for the Board's attention that the school committee has a education grant, which is part of that federal money that came along. School committee would have been well within their rights to have kept that money and used it strictly to balance the education budget, and point of fact, many, many school committees across the Commonwealth are doing that very thing. Our school committee and Superintendent instead decided to very graciously share that revenue. Now, roughly a third of that, or well over $150,000, will now accrue to the town side of the column and allow us to help balance the budget. I don't think it should go without being noted that this is an extraordinary act. It reflects the kind of partnership between the school and the town that exists here in Foxborough. Believe me, that is not the norm everywhere. It may be the norm here, and so you might find what I'm saying a little curious, but believe me, it's not the norm everywhere, and we should be both very proud of that partnership and also very grateful.
Also, on a, on a personal note, I would just like to just send a sincere thank you to Superintendent Chris Martis, if this is going to be his last time through the budget process with the town of Foxborough this year for his outstanding leadership and professionalism over the years that I've had the privilege to partner with him, truly an outstanding professional. We are, we are very fortunate, I think as we all know, to have Chris here. He's truly a champion for the community, and thank you very much for all that you've done for us, and I wish you all best. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, the net state aid loss really, if you think about it, is not only the 274,000, but it's also this 543,000. It's really an $817,000 loss, but this has been part of what, part of the soft landing that we've been in partnership, been engineering for the last four years, has actually been about $2 million of this money, including this amount for next year that the town has been using to cushion the blow here. That combined with the town's reserves for the money that we have been using very judiciously in order to maintain services, where, as you know, many of our, or most of our surrounding communities are reducing services, town of Foxborough is able to maintain services with a great partnership from the schools, with sharing of this revenue as well as our own prudent use of our own reserves. And so, obviously, that this 543,000 will create a hole in the following year's budget in FY13 because this seems to be the end of the line with this large state and federal aid. On the local receipt side of the ledger, the department fee analysis that Kevin spoke about and being led by intern Tim Cummings in partnership with the department heads has generated over $200,000 in potential new revenues for FY12, and this is being used to offset the overuse of FY11. This is local receipts, actually, not free cash. What we did is we levered up, if you will, we overrelied on the use of local receipts in this fiscal year in order to balance the fiscal 11 budget. So, the proposal is that we maintain the level of utilization of local receipts this year with the increase of 200,000, and that will allow us to generate the level of free cash in, at the end of next year that we need to generate at the end of each year in order to recharge free cash for the operating budget. So, the forecast for FY, for the FY12 is level with FY11 at 5.6 million dollars for local receipts, again, to restore the normal free cash levels in FY13, and this, again, will allow us to not, again, overrely on this area so that when the one-time monies go away, like the, like the monies coming in from the school, that we won't have dug ourselves a bigger hole. Other available revenue, or other sources, the three areas that we use here in the town of Foxborough, as you know, free cash, 1.7 million, ambulance receipts, 469,000, and enterprise and revolving fund overhead charges of 688,000. The, the plan is to be less reliant on free cash than in FY11, and the number's actually 148,000 less reliant. This year, we're using 1,848,000 effectively of free cash to balance this year's budget. That's peak, close to peak utilization. We were at that level in the last down cycle that the state had, and so we had to lever up a few of our, use of our reserves. So, we're peaking again in the year that we're in right now, so what we did, the last go around, was to de-lever or come down off the reliance on free cash. So, the, the recommendation is that, as said on the prior page, is to come down to 1.7 million for this year and to slowly step back down to the levels that we've traditionally been at, somewhere between the 1 million and 1.2 million dollar level. But that's the, that is, in a nutshell, where the town, without the benefit of the, of the state and federal monies that have come in this time around, has been able to leverage itself to get through the hard times by going up on the free cash and then down when the good times are coming, and guess what, the good times are coming. So, I know you've got to look hard, but they're here, and so we're levering down, and that's the recommendation, that we do that again, we repeat the same cycle that we just went through. So, one step down, and I expect that the next couple of years, we will step down again. And then the, the gain from FY12 or FY11 in the enterprise revolving ambulance receipts accounts is actually 95,000 between, between all three, when you add the increases on all three, and that's primarily, again, part of the fee work that's been done. Ambulance receipts are expected to increase, so there's some incremental monies there, increased... Increased benefits costs are, are result in higher allocations of overhead to the enterprise and the revolving accounts as well. So that, that's additive to the budget, the budget sources, the town for, actually 95,000. So the, the total revenue, the total net new revenue from all sources that can be used to support the operating budget is, to balance FY12 operating budget, is actually about 726,000. So it's a, it's a thin number, given the, the increases in expenses. There is additional revenue growth, actually through debt exclusion taxes of just under 1.1 million, but that cannot be used to balance the operating budget. That by definition has to be used to fund, to fund debt service. It cannot be used for anything else. So it's 726, 26,000 incremental revenue, net-net, all the changes, the puts and the takes, that is additive to be used to the general fund operating budget. There's another 1.1 million approximately, but that's gonna go towards debt service.
Just to put this 700 in context, health insurance alone, employee health insurance is up well over half a million.
Over 600,000, yeah.
Over 600,000, so just to give you a point of reference, before we even start trying to balance the school and the town budget against these revenues, almost all the new money is gone just meeting the health insurance budget. So that shows pretty graphically just how challenging this budget is to try to get balanced.
Can you also put it in context, the 726, what percentage of the entire budget that is? Is it 54 million dollar budget?
Yeah, it's about, that's about 3, 3 and 1/2 percent.
Yeah. And that's after, you brought in the revenues for the new growth and the 2 and 1/2 percent.
Correct.
Yeah, going up 2 and 1/2 percent plus new revenue, you're still short 726,000.
Still short about 747. The net new growth in revenue after all the puts and takes, because there are increases and decreases, was only 726,000.
Okay.
Two different 700,000 dollars numbers there. One's a good one, one's a bad one. I think as, as Kevin just said, so this obviously is a great challenge to, to balance the budget. So here we go to some of the scary parts that I get to share, the fixed costs.
Well, one, one note on this. Fixed costs are things that we take off the top. So we take the gross revenue, we take off fixed costs, and then once we've considered those things, then the, the remainder is what we use to balance the school and the town budget. So the fact that these are going up significantly is an extremely important factor for, for everybody to understand and what's moving them, what's making them go up. There's not a lot we can do about it.
No.
So speaking to, to OPEB, the other post-employment, you know, retirement benefits, i.e. health insurance, in, actually at, at the FY11 annual town meeting, but in a, in an article that impacted fiscal 10, we actually did fund the OPEB liability to the tune of 1.265 million with surplus pension and workers' comp monies. And these, those are one-time monies, and, and that will not be available again to us. It wasn't available to us this fiscal year, and it's not gonna be available to us next fiscal year. However, the liability on a pay-as-you-go basis for those benefits is over 62 million dollars. So what we had discussed, as we all know, is that, that 1.265 million was gonna be a down payment and that we real, we were going to recognize this liability as one that we needed to not put our head in the sands over, that we had to address it because it's smarter to put money away now in order to reduce the cost a bit later. And what we had discussed, when we've discussed this around the table before, is that we would, we certainly couldn't fund the, what's called the ARC, the annual required contribution, without inflicting significant pain and suffering to the community in terms of a dramatic reduction in services. The, the ARC, the annual required contribution that we're not putting in on an annual basis is on a, if we were fully funding, would be 1.6 million annually on a pay-as-you-go basis, actually about 4.4 million dollars, meaning we weren't, weren't putting any money aside, but we are putting some money aside. So it's a big number. So this is a starting point, so the recommendation that, that we're still all sticking with is that we, we start with a $300,000 contribution right out of the general fund, putting pressure on other operating budgets as a starting point and to move that up year over year. So this would be sort of the floor, and with the expectation that that number would increase. And this was in essence taking a page out of Needham's book. If you recall, Dan Sherman, the actuary, explained that Needham started this process about a dozen years ago, and they started with a number like this, and they incremented it up 50, 100, 150,000 a year. And ultimately it got to the point where they actually got it to a level that was their annual required contribution, or the ARC. And so that is a policy goal here, is, is to do that. So this is, it's a little painful. Obviously, if, if you took that away, then you, you don't have a 3/4 million dollar problem. You have a 450,000 dollar problem, but nobody's recommending that. We're gonna stick with the plan. $300,000 is proposed budgeted towards the OPEB trust for FY12, and I'll use their F.
And by the way, to the extent we don't appropriate the ARC each year, that 62 million gets bigger each year. So by not appropriating the annual required contribution, we're engaging in that old game of, you know, the faster we go, the behinder we get. So it's, this isn't, this isn't a good thing to do. This is an absolute requirement. We've got to get there.
And we did spend a lot of time last year talking about it, funding it. So this is not new. This is something that we were planning to do the beginning of last year.
Right. So the next big piece obviously is the pension cost, the town share of the pension.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? In the report, you talk about the terminated health fund as a potential source for OPEB funding. Do you have a projected balance on that?
It's running like it might throw off as much as a half million surplus when all claims mature, which won't occur until a year, 14, 15 months from now. If that occurs, then we'll have a surplus in that fund from the days when we were self-insured for health insurance, and that could certainly be used for OPEB or, you know, whatever else we need, but it would be surplus unavailable.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So the other, other big area is, is pension costs, and this, you know, comes in at over 2 million dollars. The town share of the pension cost is increasing, and it's also increasing relative to other communities. So there's some puts and takes here. It could have been worse, but one of the good things that Norfolk County Pension Board did was they finally followed the state's lead and pushed the funding schedule out from what was currently the year 2022, out to 2031. So you extend the, sort of remortgage the, the obligation, if you will, and so it reduces the payments, so to speak, of the unfunded liability. Initially had been at 2028 as the year, then they pulled it in during the downtime, sort of was anti-sentiment, and now they pushed it out to 2031. So that's given everybody some relief. But a couple of things happened that didn't go in the, one thing didn't go in everybody's favor, and then one thing that didn't go in Foxborough's favor. The, the state retirement system, PERAC, has removed the Sheriff's Association from, the County Sheriff's Association from the Norfolk County system and pulled them up to the state system. So that's, you would think that that would not have an effect, but it actually allows the, the unfunded liability is now spread over, over a larger pool. So it's a little bit less sharing, so it actually hurts everybody a little bit. And then sort of the good news, bad news is, is that while other communities have not had, or most communities have not had the financial resources that this town has had in order to weather the hard times or engineer the soft landing and reduce services, while they've been, you know, cutting employees, well, as a result, their pension costs relative to the towns went down a little bit. So our pension costs, so our, you know, where our payroll grew in relationship a little bit larger than, than other, than the other communities participating in the Norfolk County pension system. So our assessment reflects that because the, the, the total burden of the pension costs is split prorata based on your payroll. So we had that not, not go in our favor. So sort of good news, bad news. We get to maintain services, but, you know, we have to pay a little bit more. And that little bit more is, our pension assessment this year is up 137,000 or 6.2%. We were hoping the worst-case scenario might have been 5% or maybe less, but, but this year it's gonna be 6.2%. Not officially voted yet, but that's, that's what we're hearing from the actuary, about 137,000. The employee health, health insurance increase for FY12 is 620,000. That assumes a 7% increase from Maya, as you know, our new, new insurer. And that's not, that rate hasn't been voted yet. So there, it could, it could move in a couple of different directions here. There could be an increase in that rate, because that was our assumed rate, based on our claims experience, you know, could go up as much as another 4%, which could be another couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, going the wrong way. Or if there are some policy changes or bargaining changes that decrease, you know, co-pays, that could actually move, move the cost the other way by about, by a similar amount. So we're sticking in the middle for now, pending, you know, pending some more information and more progress there. The debt service piece, our, our debt service is increasing 450,000. 350,000 is the net increase associated with exempt debt. The exempt debt is actually increasing, we haven't bonded the library yet, but it will be increasing in FY12 when we bond the, the library this winter, early spring. I'm anticipating that the annual debt service for that in FY12 will be about 675,000, but due to some maturing issues, our excluded debt went down by about 325,000. So then, so the net is, is 450, 350,000 of that is exempt debt. And then 100,000 is, is budgeted here as non-exempt debt for some short-term financing, assuming that the town hall project and recommendation is a go at May town meeting. And that is, is the end of the fixed cost part of the presentation. And...
Thanks.
And now we have the, the operating budget.
This, by the way, is proof positive. Trust the electronics, but always make a paper copy. Go the old technology. Thank goodness Randy did that. Okay, so now what we're gonna do is tell you about what is in the proposed budget that is back attached to this memo. Now, we're not telling, we're not going through everything. We're going through the changes, what's changed from last year to this year. And along the way, there may be some revenues to report as well. So the first proposal is the HR director. As I think you're aware, we have, we have 700 employees. We've got 230-odd retirees. So we've got pretty close to 1,000 people who our HR department is responsible for, but we have no HR capability. Obviously, in a corporate world, you wouldn't have a company with probably 30 or 40 people, much less 1,000, and no HR, professional HR capability. And the price we pay for that is, we have made quite a number of HR mistakes. And I'll give you an example. We were, as we were doing this draft a couple of days ago, Randy and I were debating which ones to put up here, so I will, I will tell you one that we picked out. And there are quite a number, unfortunately. Our pre-65 retirees. Now, under Massachusetts, normal retirement age is 65, and Foxborough's taxpayers have seen fit to provide health insurance for those retirees at a 50-50 contributory split. Town pays half, employee pays half. We have a number of employees who, for various reasons, are able to retire prior to 65. Consequently, they do not qualify for Medicare until they hit that age. So they have to, by law, remain on our active plans, like employees who are still actively employed. Someone in the past made the interpretation, which is incorrect, that those retirees would stay on the 70-30 split that active retirees are on and not go to the 50-50 split that they should have been put on. And by so doing, a practice was established. That practice costs us $140,000 in today's dollars every year. That's not a one-time cost, that is an annual cost. An HR professional would have pointed that out like that, and that mistake would never have been made. We have been paying that for quite a number of years, and it now arguably becomes a bargainable issue in order to, to correct it. So we also had a dependent, an employee, who, due to the lack of having required paperwork provided for... When someone enrolls in the town's health insurance plan, if they say that they have dependents, be it a spouse or children, they should be required to provide proof of that. Birth certificates, marriage certificate, if it's a full-time student, proof of enrollment. In the past, we've not required that. Last year, the town did a dependent eligibility audit, and we found a number of mistakes, including one employee who had falsified that documentation many years ago and because the town didn't require the proper documentation. And the cost of the town is $53,000 that's been erroneously paid out over the last 10 years. Once again, an HR director would have insisted that when an employee enrolls in the town's health insurance, that they provide that documentation. That's bread and butter. That's basic stuff for an HR professional. These are just two mistakes. We could give you a number of others, unfortunately. It's not a criticism of our existing employees because they are not trained in this area. So it's, it's grossly unfair to be critical and to say that we should have known because you can't know if you're not trained. But it points out the fact that we have made serious mistakes, and we will continue to make serious mistakes if we do not employ an HR professional. A thousand employees is far too big a number to not have a proper capability. So that is a, that is probably the single most important proposal in this entire budget, I would say candidly. Now, one of the ways that we can help offset that cost, we are currently employing a labor attorney at 150-plus dollars an hour. Much of what that labor attorney is doing can be done by the HR professional at about a third of that cost. If, looking at the past few years and looking at what we're currently doing and looking forward to next year in terms of grievances, unfair labor practices, contracts, all that kind of work that has to get done, the current legal budget, which I've level funded, is about 50,000 short of where it ought to be because I put the HR director in. Now, if we don't fund the HR director, then we're going to have to put that money back into the legal budget. So there's a partial offset by virtue of, in the legal budget, by virtue of having an HR director working at a lot cheaper dollars. Next proposal, we have taken a part-time finance clerk and increased that to full-time for a cost of $15,000. That cost was, that, that move was known when we went to quarterly tax bills last year because this clerk is the requirement in order to be able to process those quarterly tax bills in a manageable way. And that was, again, this is not a surprise, it's something that was forecasted. The increased interest earnings, even in the, in the poor economy that we're at right now, is about $36,000 offsetting that cost. So we've made up better than double for the cost of the clerk in interest earnings. But we were recently told in a Department of Homeland Security ruling that the town clerk's office, which maintains vital statistic records on births, can no longer process passports because of the conflict, the potential for, potentially issuing, the same office issuing the birth certificate as issues the passport and potential abuse. So it has to be pulled apart. So we're gonna put that into the finance office. That means $7,500 in annual revenue, which we currently receive, will continue to receive, but we would lose if we didn't continue the passport service. And finally, there is some clerical savings in the solid waste budget, which we're gonna move into this office, and that's about a $10,000 savings. So we've got all that money offsetting that $15,000. We've reduced the reserve fund by 30,000. We've been in dialogue with the advisory committee, and they concur with this. And it's very simple. We've budgeted tighter. We're going to be giving you some presentations and some analysis on overtime. Dick's comments tonight were right on point in terms of the kinds of things we're thinking about. And we're quite confident, because of much tighter budgeting, that a lot of the reasons that reserve fund transfers get generated will not occur next year. So we've been able to shave that budget accordingly. Legal, I already told you about. The town clerk, we put 20,000 in there for records preservation. I think you all know about that. That was some, an issue that came here some time ago, and hopefully we can preserve that. That'll do a lot of work, and then after that amount is expended, I think we can get by with a smaller annual. But we've got some very important town records that are deteriorating, and once they go, they go. They're not, we're not gonna get them back. Conservation commission, we have increased the agent from 19 hours a week to 23 hours a week. This is just an efficiency... is just an efficiency move. We took a few hours away from the clerical position, which is currently vacant, shifted them over to the agent at a higher rate. But we're going to take the remaining ten hours of the Concom secretary, combine it with the planning board secretary, and we're going to have, instead of two offices that are only partially open, we're going to put one secretary. We're going to have both offices open full-time now. So we're actually spending less dollars, but we're going to be able to engage the public in much better office hours and much better communication for both boards. So it'll be one secretary working for both the planning board and the conservation commission. Any hours of the public will improve dramatically at a lower cost. So that's a good efficiency. And by the way, the increased hours for the conservation agent are being supported with increased fees that the Concom has yet to vote, but we're confident that they, that they will in fact vote it. I think it's been known to the board for quite a while. And I think there's been a lot of discussion. Dick just raised the issue. Why not look at cutting overtime in departments by hiring employees in the case where it makes sense to do so? So, we are currently filling the equivalent of nearly forty hours a week in the dispatch office, public safety dispatch with a uniformed police officer. We can eliminate, we can hire a dispatcher, an eighth dispatcher, eliminate that much in overtime. And it's a one-for-one trade. But the good news is, the police officer, who is now spending part of their day dispatching, will now be freed up to be a police officer and use their, use their greater training and skills being a police officer. So it's not an increased cost. It's a wash in the budget. But what we gain is quite a few hours per week over in the police department in the form of that officer is now free to do police work. That's an efficiency. DPW director, town engineer, as you know, the cost of those two positions is budgeted at two hundred and twenty thousand. We've eliminated the water superintendent and the highway superintendent, saving most of that salary. We've cut twenty thousand dollars in three engineering budgets, which will now be performed by the town engineer. And the shared DPW management capability that we're doing with Plainville will result in Plainville paying the town thirty thousand dollars. So, the net effect of this DPW creation is a savings to the town of twenty-nine thousand. Now, that twenty-nine thousand is divided between the general fund and the water sewer enterprise fund, but it's a real savings to the town. Over in the landfill solid waste budget, we have increased the collection cost as a contract service, as the curbside collection that we do. That service will go up thirty thousand next year. Now, I will hasten to add that we're going to be taking a very close look at that and finding out what's going on. I haven't had time to do it yet because most communities are dropping their solid waste collection costs right now. And I don't know what the status of our contract is. If we are near the end of a contract, then I'll be probably doing something aggressive in that area. But it hasn't been able to happen yet. So right now, it's got to go up until we can
You centered into it last year.
We're halfway through it.
Halfway through. I will tell you that
We got good grades and we, like
We did. This is anticipation of some tipping fee increases and increase in more customers.
I will tell you that in another community where I worked, we took a mid-year solid waste contract, renegotiated it, added some years to the contract, and dropped the price by seven hundred and fifty thousand over eight years. So it is possible, even if we have a contract, to potentially realize some savings. What I cannot tell you is, as of tonight, when this budget is being presented, that those savings yet can be quantified or are even possible. But I'm very hopeful. Reduction in clerical in the landfill solid waste budget, as I've already indicated, and transfer those duties over to the finance office. Engineering budget was reduced. And we are looking at privatizing the compost area and moving it. And I'm very, very optimistic, in fact, absolutely sure, that that will be able to happen. I think the people, folks who live in the area and who inhabit the industrial, small industrial complex in area, will be very grateful to hear that they won't be plagued by the compost area there. And by privatizing it, I think we'll be able to offer a far better service to the public. And the savings is going to be the twelve thousand in overtime that we spend to maintain it. Also, the possibility that there could be some revenue in it for the town, I don't know yet. So we're not forecasting that. But we certainly will be able to save what we're spending on it. So that's a, I think, a major improvement. Veteran's service, budget is up forty-one thousand dollars. This is simply a reflection of the fact that we've got a very, very good veteran's service officer. He is taking out to the public in, in many, many ways, the opportunity for veterans to take advantage of the programs that exist. He's communicating them and they are taking advantage. Now, that's, that's good news. Seventy-five percent of what we are now spending, which is a lot more than we were previously spending, will get reimbursed by the state. So we'll get part of that money back, thirty-odd thousand out of the forty-one. But the most important thing is that the town has now stepped up to the plate and is really doing the fine job taking care of its veterans' population by getting the programs to them that they deserve. That was a decision that the board made last summer. I know it was attended by some controversy. And I applaud the board. You made the right decision. And it's working out very well. But it does cost a bit. In the recreation department, we've been able to increase the rec director to full-time for the forty-two weeks that she is currently not full-time. So this position will now go to full-time year-round. That is one hundred percent supported by fees that the department itself generates in a whole variety of areas. One of the most lucrative areas that they can generate fees in is the rental property that they have. They're throwing off a tremendous amount of revenue, which has been accruing to a trust fund and is now vastly more than we need in there. So we're going to start taking some of that out and also taking some of the annual rental income to support this position. Real win-win there. And the result will be better programming to the public at no cost to the taxpayer. Energy savings is one of the real, real bright notes here. As the board knows, we bid the electrical, the electric generating portion of the utility bill twice. And both times, we brought the price down. I hasten to add that Paul Jackson over in the school department has been absolutely fantastic in helping us figure out, great, we got better bids. What does it mean? Paul has spreadsheets like you would not believe. He can tell you on Valentine's Day how much energy any school will require. I've never seen anything quite like it. It's, it's the most sophisticated analysis I've ever seen. He is teaching us how to do it for all the town buildings. And we are most grateful for his generosity. Once again, a great example of how the school and the town, you know, work together. So, what we can tell you is that right now, so far, the natural gas, the heating savings component of this rebidding is about twenty thousand, seven hundred and fifty in town buildings and about seventy thousand in school buildings. Not yet included there is the electric savings, which we're still analyzing to figure out how those very favorable bids are going to impact the budget. What we do know is that the portion of the electric utility bill went down by about a third. But it's only one portion because transmission is another piece. And so Paul's got to figure all that out for us. Thank you. Getting near the end of the operating budget, colas. As I said, it's a zero and three. Now, for some employees, that'll be a zero this year and a three next year. For others, it'll be a three this year and a zero next year. Taking that into account, we estimate that the cost for fiscal twelve next year will be a hundred and eighty-eight for the, to the general fund and twenty-six thousand in the enterprise fund for those colas. So, when you take those budget highlights and all the rest of the budget and the school budget and those fixed costs that Randy talked about, and you compare them to our revenues, back in December, that generated a two million dollar deficit. Now, that was after the departments all submitted their requests. So at that point in, in December, we had a two million dollar deficit. I didn't bring that to you because I didn't have enough aspirin to go with it for you. But we did start working on it, obviously. Chris and, and Paul and Randy and I, I can't tell you how many meetings we've had and discussions. And the level of cooperation has been, is the best I've ever seen it in any community I've ever worked in. And that's a real blessing. Now, that deficit is theoretical because what we're doing is we're taking a snapshot of the revenues at a particular moment in time, as best we can estimate them. We're comparing it to a budget that's been requested but not yet approved. And that was yielded a two million dollar shortfall. So revenue was two million dollars less than the budgets that were required. Again, the goal at that point was to have a level services budget. So we went to work. And here's what we came up with. First, we reduced in the area of energy, and I've gone over that with you. We saved some money by virtue of the DPW reorganization. Part of that twenty-nine thousand dollars, I double-stated it, is the money that Plainville will pay to the town for shared DPW management. So that thirty thousand that Plainville will pay us is actually part of that twenty-nine thousand. We've had some work reassigned, moved over into the finance CFO's office. And Randy's been fantastic in picking up all that work for us. And that's allowed us to save some money. Compost privatization, twelve thousand. So, we also reduced the reserve fund, as I mentioned, and eliminated the solid waste contingency funding. There was some funding in there that was just put in there every year, I think by force of habit more than anything. And it wasn't necessary. So, total savings is about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. I'm sorry, when you take the thirty thousand double count out, it's a hundred and forty-seven. That number's actually correct. Now, those are pure efficiencies. That's nothing but figuring out better ways, more efficient ways to do the things we already do. As Randy has indicated, we've had a project ongoing for some time now with an intern, a management intern, looking at revenues that the departments generate. The final number, and it's still moving, fortunately, it's, it's moving upwards, is two hundred and twenty-three thousand as of today. Not including another eighty thousand in ambulance fees, which will accrue to the ambulance fund alone. That, as you know, is a revolving account. So we've done some things in the, I'll give you, for instance, the town years ago signed a preferential agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield, where we agreed to give a discount and they agreed to refer more business to us. Well, that sounds good when you first hear it. But then when you start to think, you say, wait a minute, we don't do transport services. We only do emergency services. Blue Cross doesn't refer anything to us. Our ambulance only transports emergencies. Those are not referrals. So we gave away a substantial amount of revenue for nothing. We have, as of last week, canceled that agreement. That will mean about eighty thousand dollars in new revenue, I'm sorry, about sixty thousand in new revenue and another forty thousand because frankly, our ambulance rates are not competitive with communities around us. So those will increase. Those are capped by Medicare to a great extent. And, but Medicare plus is what cities and towns charge. And we're not being competitive. That's another forty thousand. Twenty of that has been taken out of the revolving account and transferred to the general fund. Majority of the money has to, by law, accrue to that ambulance fund. But the impact on the general fund, by virtue of this project so far, is two hundred and twenty-three thousand. And that number is improving literally on a daily basis. We're getting more and more in there. The governor's budget produced three hundred and thirty-nine thousand in new income. The House and the Senate plan to take up a local aid resolution. We just met, met with our state rep this morning, Jay. He's been incredibly helpful and informative to us. And if they do take up that local aid resolution and they approve the governor's proposal for local aid, and we're told that they likely will, then we will pick up three hundred and thirty-nine thousand compared to where we were in December. This is still a cut in local aid compared to where we were last year and two years ago. We're not back in real dollars, let alone inflation-adjusted dollars. But we're better off than what we had predicted back in December where we would be. So that's good news. We've cut the departmental budgets about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand below what they were requested. And that's scattered all over the place in the budget. And again, the school, from its generosity, has given us shared five hundred and forty-three thousand of their grant. So the original deficit was two million. The savings, new revenue, reductions in the budget, efficiencies, the combined total of all of that has brought us one point two-five million in new dollars or saved dollars. And that reduces the current structural deficit to seven hundred and forty-seven thousand. Now, what do we do with that? Well, there's two ways you can address that deficit. Raise the bridge, lower the river. It's pretty simple. There's no magic at this point. We've, I will not say to you that we have done all the efficiencies that we can do. We're still working on an enormous array of ideas. The problem is getting those ideas researched, confirming them, making them sure enough that we could put them into the budget. For instance, the composting. I won't issue the RFP on that until the spring. But we're confident in terms of the result because we've had dialogues with vendors. We know we'll save this money. We know we'll have bids. There are a lot of other good ideas out there. We just haven't had time to finish them. So there's lots more going on. But at this point, they're not, they're not ready for primetime, as they say. So I've got to give you two possible plans. One plan is to cut the budget. The other plan is to create more revenue. So, first thing, there's two moving parts to the create revenue, save more money side. And there's four or five parts to the reduce the budget side. How can we create more revenue? Two steps. Number one, continue with our negotiation with our employees to change the office visit component of our health insurance plans from five dollars to fifteen. The town would save a hundred and ninety thousand combined between the school and general government. The employees would save forty-two thousand odd dollars, which they would divide between themselves. I don't think that I need to say that a five-dollar office visit co-pay is antiquated. That has not been available in the private sector for probably twenty years. Most government employers don't have it anymore either. It's simply unheard of. Right now, by going from five to fifteen, we can get a four percent decrement, four percent reduction in our healthcare costs. If we delay implementation of that simple step, and we become the minority of Blue Cross Blue Shield clients who still have the five dollar, as that segment of their book of business, as it's called, gets smaller and smaller, they will finally get to the point where they will mandate that you get rid of it. And they will give no credit for it. And that is an unfortunate phenomenon that happens to employers who wait too long. Right now, it's worth four percent off the rate. That's a hundred and ninety thousand. And that's permanent. That means the rate comes down a hundred and ninety thousand and it stays down a hundred and ninety thousand forever. This is an extremely important step for us to take. As you know, I reported last week, the police department, police union has now accepted that change. There'll be some further public discussion of it at your next meeting and a thank you to them for doing it, leading the way, I hope, for the rest of our employees. So that one is in play. And that is a very good step that hopefully will materialize. And secondly, the meals tax. Now, the meals tax is a proposal that has to go to an annual town meeting. Town meeting has to decide if they want to do this. Here's what the revenue potential is. Six hundred and two thousand dollars if adopted at the May town meeting. The full revenue potential is seven hundred and fifty thousand. And the reason is a variation is because if you adopt it in May, then the state collects the first three months, but we don't get them till October. So we only get seventy-five percent of the total revenue from July one, two thousand and eleven to June thirty, two thousand and twelve. Every year thereafter, we get a hundred percent. That's worth seven fifty. Now, should we do this? Shouldn't we do it? That's up to you. That's a policy decision of the board, ultimately in cooperation with the school committee and with the advisory committee. And ultimately, it's a decision of the town. But I put it out there because it's an obvious one. And I have lots of information for you about it. Basically, everybody around us, every contiguous town to Foxborough has now done it, with the exception of Sharon and Mansfield. I don't know what they're planning for the spring. A hundred, I think it's a hundred and thirty or a hundred and forty-odd towns in the Commonwealth have now done it. The vast majority that haven't are the western communities where it frankly doesn't mean much in terms of revenue. But the eastern communities have pretty much adopted it. And we'll have lots more to say about it. We're doing lots of research. And I'll present that to you at a, at a future date. But it is an obvious possibility to help balance this budget. And it's a decision, if you'd like to pursue if you'd like to pursue it. Plan B. Plan B is simple. We have to cut the budget $747,000. Now, this means a loss of service to the public. I can't accomplish both your goal of level service and not reduce the budget as the revenue picture stands right now. Now, as Randy has said, there are a lot of moving parts to that revenue picture. Some things can go up, some things can go down, but as of today, with the budgets that have been submitted, with the revenues that we feel comfortable forecasting, a level services budget is about 3/4 of a million more than we currently have the money for. So if we don't do the $5 to $15 office visit co-pay change and we don't do the meals tax, then we would need to reduce the budget. Now, our formula calls for 70/30 split between the school and the town. That means the town shares $224,000, the school's $523,000. I will not purport to speak for the school, obviously. I'll leave that to the superintendent. But I will tell you what the implications would be for us. We have a police officer position vacant right now. We actually have three. I'm filling two, as you know. One will be kept open, available to be reduced by attrition if necessary. We have a firefighter EMT that we currently have no vacancies, but we have one position that might become vacant. If it doesn't become vacant, and we were forced to consider this, we would probably have a layoff. We have one, two DPW positions available right now. I'm keeping both open in order to create revenue to pay for the retirement buyouts that we had to pay, sick leave and vacation buybacks for two employees that retired. Later in the spring, we will be able to afford to replace one of those two positions, but one will be kept open in the event we need to reduce by attrition. The only reason I wouldn't put the other one on the chopping block, the other open DPW, is because it's one of the two mechanics, and we cannot get by without a full mechanic staff. We simply can't do it. We maintain all the school buses, all the police cruisers, all the DPW trucks. We cannot do it with one mechanic. So we have to fill this. We're struggling down there right now. We can get by for a couple of months, but we will have to fill it. But the labor position will be kept open, and that would be sacrificed in the event we needed to reduce the budget. The HR director, because that's a brand-new proposal, would be sacrificed. That would be a really bad outcome, frankly, but obviously, I'm not going to propose hiring a new employee, however important it is, and lay off existing employees. I couldn't in good conscience do that. With all that said and done, we wouldn't be there yet. We'd still need to lay off, and there are no other vacancies, so we would have a layoff of another one or two employees. And based on the numbers Randy and I did just very late this afternoon, that would be two, for sure, not one. So, it now becomes a policy decision of the boards to decide which course you'd like to pursue. We will keep grinding away on alternatives. We will keep working those alternatives, trying to come up with other ways to do this. But I will be honest with you. While I'm very optimistic about the co-pay change in the health insurance area, closing a $600,000 gap, which is what the meals tax represents, I'm not optimistic that there's enough things we can do quickly enough to come up with that much revenue or that many efficiencies and to not have it disrupt service. I think you're looking at a real service disruption there. And before I go to the superintendent for his comments, I want to say a couple thank yous if I could. I want to thank Randy. This guy has been unbelievable, and his staff, some of whom are sitting back there. We have bounced, I can't tell you how many ideas off of them and asked them to compute and re-compute and re-compute. "Well, what if we did this? And what if we did that?" And they have been faithful, and they have been tireless in doing that. I am incredibly impressed at Randy and his staff. They do phenomenal work. All those spreadsheets, you see them churning out. I've lost track how many different versions of them we've done by now, but I really don't want to miss the opportunity. Thank you. Chris Martis and Paul Jackson, the superintendent and business agent, did I get your title right? Yeah.
You're the one.
There you go. They have simply been phenomenal to deal with. Again, you know, I don't know how many meetings we've had, but everything you're seeing here tonight is really a composite effort from the four of us, an enormous amount of work. And again, the fact that we have that relationship in Foxborough, we should be so proud of it, and we should protect it and guard it so jealously because it is absolutely not the normal situation. This is a wonderful relationship we've got, and I can't say enough about Chris and Paul. Thanks. All the department heads have done great work. They've worked and reworked those budgets. I particularly want to say thank you to Chief O'Leary, Chief Hatfield, and Highway Superintendent Bob Swanson. They've done a lot of work to redo things in their budgets, rethink their requests, and trim it. Tim Cummings has been fantastic, our intern. He's going to make an outstanding town manager because he knows what it is to do the hardest part of this business, and that is get one of these budgets to balance. He's done a tremendous job. He's created almost a quarter million dollars in value for us, and he's not done yet. He's still chugging along. And finally, thanks to Sandra Herman, and Chris, who, between them, keep everything running in here. I don't know what's going on lately, I'll be honest with you. I'm so busy crunching numbers, I don't know what's going on in here, but somebody does, and that's those two people in there, and so thank you to them. So that is the budget presentation, and I know the superintendent would like to add some comments. And again, my apologies for the PowerPoint glitch, but folks at home that want to send me PowerPoint for dummies, please send that book in. I could use it. Thanks.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the board, and all the folks on the municipal side. It is a terrific working relationship that we share. I do want to ask if it's too late to reconsider that $543,000 deficit. Now, I know I have a $498,000 deficit to cover, but I think that, I think those words were very kind, but I also want to harken back to three and four years ago when we were able to share revenue at an equal rate. So I have always felt that if you're together during the good times and you're not together during the bad times, it just creates all sorts of problems. We know that we have our fair share of work to do as well. We also know it's a moving target. Now, I could quite simply come up here and say each of our employees is worth about $50,000 because if we were laying off, we'd lay off our least senior people, and you can easily do the math and say that's about 10 positions. But we also know that it is a moving target, and there's some other areas that we need to look at. We're still listening to resignations, retirement, those kinds of things, so there may be some savings through that kind of attrition. We're hoping that the special education circuit breaker holds with the governor's budget. I think that would give us some relief. But that number, I will say this very confidently, that number, if we have to cut $500,000, it will mean people. There's no question in my mind about that. How many and where, that's work that the school committee and our administrative team will be doing, but it does mean people. So I think I could leave this part of the meeting saying that. We just don't know exactly what that will look like yet. So I do think there are some great options that this board will be considering and that the school committee will be considering because I do think that the town has some unique opportunities that other communities don't have, and I think that those ideas should really be fully vetted, and then some really intelligent decisions made around that. I think we have some time to do that, and I hope that we all have that conversation collaboratively because I think that really is the spirit of the town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, should we go into...oh, yeah, Dick, I'm sorry. Comments from the audience?
I really have a couple of questions, a little upside. We're short $726,000, you're indicating. What happens to the $1 million for snow, the overtime that isn't counted under salaries in the four different departments? We're over $1,007, not $700,000, as I read what you have presented. I mean, Randy has produced tremendous amounts of information for me, so has the departments, the chiefs, and Swanson. But Randy's own figures say the overtime at the police department is $576,000, not the $390,000 that we're talking about in the salary account. So there's 200 there, there's 100 in the fire, 100 in the dispatch, and so on, and that isn't counted. We're short $1,007,000, not 7, as I read the account as we go through it. Second point, as I mentioned earlier, COLA is an adjustment on cost of living. It has nothing to do with raises. The school department in your presentation indicate, "Oh, we're not going to give the COLA," as if that's the raise. That isn't the raise. When we met last spring here on a Saturday, the bulk of the people that talked to your board indicated a no-raise position. They wanted the level of funding. You went to level spending. The town bought it, and we paid for those salary accounts that we were saving. That salary money that came back to the town, the 400, now 500,000 with the other fund in it, should be town funds, not school department funds, even though the check went to schools. Listen, I sat on that board. I know the problems that they go through to get their budget intact, but that money was to reimburse the town for saving the jobs. It was not to be spent by the school committee. It should go back into the general fund to offset the taxpayer cost. As Randy indicated, it would cost $1,002,000 and we would lay off 10 to 12 people. That's record. It's been on television, it's been in the newspapers from last year. Why did the feds only give us $400,000? That was a question I raised. Where's the other $600,000? $700,000?
Did you want me to answer those questions, or no?
That's not neither here nor there. This is a question of that fund being used by a department while it should be a reimbursement to the town and the taxpayer for funding those jobs. You know, we can go back in many areas on that account. Nowhere in the presentation does it bring the salary accounts up to the total that's paid out for overtime. Nowhere. They're all deficits spent in terms of the budget and the numbers that are there. The numbers I've gotten on overtime are different. Randy's given me several prints. Several of them are different. The chiefs have given me different prints. The numbers are different. I've simply resolved, there is overtime that involves positions, but the position cost is something...I know Randy and Kevin and I got in a little conversation on this. The Department of Labor Statistics says the net cost of a new employee is 1.4. I think Randy used the figure, or you did, .34 to .42. The net cost, they also admit very clearly, the fixed costs are not included in this. You have to have a desk, a computer, paid a license for the computer program, gasoline for the car, all these other costs, light, heat, space, and what have you. That is the total cost of the employee, not the 1.4. And we need to think about that when we talk about the positions. The fire department wants eight more people. I think that was his number. Is the chief here? No. But he presented it in front of advisory. He's looking for another level of eight persons. Eight persons at 1.4, we can certainly afford because their overtime is 13,000 hours, but at two per employee, we can't afford it. It would heighten this deficit that we're looking at. But we need to look at the placement of new employees to offset some costs, to offset personnel, to offset these conditions that we're talking about. And, you know, the classic is dispatch. Why put a high-priced police or fireman in there when a civilian dispatcher costs less? We're short two. I don't know why we're only talking one. But the point is made, and I think we need to look at it. The last point, the snow account. This is one that irritates the hell out of me. They've done a good job. You've commended them, all of you have commended them. Okay, they knocked my mailbox off, so I'm a little ticked, but how many others did they knock off? But the point is, when you look at it, they have that double-time figure in there, which is part of the problem with the annual report, that the employee salary numbers are all screwed up for last year because the double-time was not counted. Randy printed out a substitute sheet showing all those numbers. But the point is, their account is not $110,000. It's in the $600,000 range. Snow and ice. Last year was 571 officially. We add in the double time, we're up at 650. You know, but that is the half-million excess that we're short, but we need to get that cleaned up. But the point is, that is not the true cost of snow removal. There were 11 weekdays where the men were involved on regular time. Like yesterday, the plows were up my cul-de-sac. A regular weekday, regular pay, no overtime. There were 11 days at $3,400 a day. The snow account burned up another $40,000 in '09. But our numbers don't show this. And this is the irritation I have had, looking at this, the overtime and everything else. We're short $1 million beyond your assessment. The 400 from the schools should come back to offset the taxpayer payout. The questions you got at that Saturday meeting, the bulk of them, except for Norton and Paul, were all cut the raises. The raises have not been cut. You're cutting the COLA. The COLA's been zero for the elderly for two years, and it's going to be zero next year. If you don't like it, the elderly is the biggest voting bloc in town. You ought to think about them. They outnumber the school-aged children. But look at the two budgets, and who's paying the bill? That concerns me. And that's the end of it for tonight. Thank you.
Couple comments. Overtime accounts, I just want to stress to the board, I think what Dick was referring to is that we budget a certain amount for overtime, and then we habitually spend more than that. That doesn't come from money which is brought in externally into the budget. It comes from outage in the budget. What, let me give you, for instance, in the fire department, we run a seven firefighter shift. We hire back at six, meaning if one firefighter on the shift is sick, injured on duty, training, whatever, we don't hire back, no overtime. But we have made a policy decision that when the second firefighter on that shift doesn't report for work, for whatever reason, we hire back at overtime. That's why your overtime, and we have the same issue in the police department. Board has made a conscious policy decision in the past that six is the minimum staffing in the fire department, and six is the minimum staffing in the police department per shift. If we were to increase the regular staff, we would have to budget for that, and it unfortunately does not have a corresponding dollar-for-dollar effect on the overtime budget. But I want to be sure that everybody understands, while we do spend more on overtime than we typically budget, it's because we know some of those overtime events are driven by police or firefighters who get injured and whose shift we then have to cover, but we cover it out of those dollars that we're saving. And in fact, I'm hoping that we're not going to inject any external money into those budgets. We'll be doing a lot more to analyze overtime because I certainly agree with Dick that there's work that can take place, and there's potential savings and efficiencies that could be realized. I can't tell you tonight what those are, but I can tell you that there won't be money interjected on those budgets unless something extraordinary happens. If you budget for, with the expectation of three officers injured on duty during the course of a year, because that's your average, and you have six, you're going to have to spend more overtime, or you're going to have to consciously reduce the shifts. The townspeople have said in the past, I would guess, that they don't want to sacrifice public safety by taking that six firefighter or six police officer minimum staffing down to five or four. Unless somebody wants to change that minimum staffing, we have, you know, we're not spending any extra money on overtime to staff up beyond six. That's where we staff up, two, six. But if you do the math with a 30-odd-person police department, a 30-odd-person fire department, just taking the vacation alone that you owe those 60 people, you are going to have more than one outage event per shift causing are going to have more than one outage event per shift causing overtime. And that doesn't include sickness, injured on duty, et cetera, et cetera, training. That's why your overtime budgets are so high, because we are staffing to a very high standard, six and six. That's a high standard. Change the standard to five, your overtime will drop. Change it to four, it'll drop. But is that a standard the public wants to tolerate? Is that a standard that the board wants to have? So there's your overtime. There are no new firefighters in this budget. I just wanted to be sure that that's clear. The chief asked for more firefighters. Certainly would love to do it if we had the money. We can't. There are no new firefighters in this budget. As I reported, we are hoping to hang on to all the firefighters we currently have and not lose one. Snow and ice budget that we've prepared in this budget is six hundred... Six hundred and thirteen thou-
One thirteen thousand.
What?
One hundred thirteen. We love a funded-
No, no, I know, but we created a margin with the expectation of running over in the amount of-
Right, another-
Four fifty?
Three, I think it's three hundred thousand.
All right. So the budget that's actually in here for snow and ice is one thirty, but there's another four hundred thousand dollars held against taxation for when we inevitably run over. And that shows clearly, if you look in that spreadsheet, you'll see right at the top of the page, reserve for snow and ice, over expended. And let me just tell you exactly what the number is so that we're not speculating. It's a hundred and fifty thousand more than this year. It was three hundred this year, so I think it's four fifty, thereabouts, on top of the hundred and thirty. And I certainly concur, we don't spend a hundred and thirty thousand. We haven't spent a hundred and thirty thousand in forever. Massachusetts, you can do it either way. You can create a reserve against the over expenditure or you can put more in your budget. It's six and one-half dozen of the other. We do it this way, you know, other towns do it differently. So we have budgeted over half a million dollars. I want that to be clear. And Dick's comment on giving employee increases, again, the COLA is a three percent over two years. So it's a one and a half, if you will, each year, expressed as a zero one year and a three the next year, or a three and a zero depending upon which year, what union employee's in. I think what Dick is referring to is step increases. Now, some of the contracts have steps in there. Contract might have three steps, it might have five steps. I don't, I'd have to have them in front of me. And what it says is you get hired at a lower rate than the maximum that you can get over time. As you're here longer, you become more valuable to the town. And so the unions have negotiated contracts that provide steps that you get over time. You cannot remove those steps unless you bargain them out. It's difficult to bargain a zero because what we're saying is we're not going to give a raise. And that's, that's the current policy. That's what we're doing. But it is quite another thing to say to a, to a union, we're going to cut your pay. We're going to take away what you've already got in your contract. I will tell you, and I will put my thirty years of bargaining against anyone who tries to say differently, if you don't get a contract settled trying to do that and you go into mediation, fact-finding, arbitration, et cetera, you'll lose. Simple as that. This is not a state where you can take away employee benefits in a, in a unionized setting and win. You can't. You might be able to do it, I don't know, in Michigan, maybe you can do it in Oklahoma, but you can't do it in Massachusetts. I've been doing this for thirty years. Superintendent over there's been doing it at least as long as I have. And I think we can both say, you don't do takeaways in the state of Massachusetts. You do do things like change the offices at copay structure from five to fifteen. That is a takeaway. But you do it in a bargaining kind of an environment and you try to offset it with other things. So, you know, I certainly agree with Dick. There are step increases in here and it, and they cost, I think we figured a half a million dollars across all employees, school and town. But in order to not pay those, you would have to negotiate a contract that takes those out. And you won't win that. So I would be less than truthful were I to advise you or to say to the public that you would have a reasonable expectation of taking those out. I would be engaging in the old game of political demagoguery to try to mislead people and say, you can win that. You can't. So I don't want the impression to go out there that there's a half a million dollars of step increases that we could magically make go away. We can't. Tough enough to get a zero COLA, believe me.
Okay, are there any other comments from folks? Then at this time, should we be going into executive session or...
Yes.
So entertain a motion to...
We move to enter into executive session with the school committee and superintendent for the purpose of contract negotiations. I'm sorry, collective bargain, collective bargaining.
And we will be coming back into open session for...
To come back into open session.
Yep. Gonna share our items.
Discussion?
Yes.
So when we go in with the school committee to talk about negotiations, we are not going to be talking about the meal stacks. We're not going to be talking about the budget. So this is the opportunity to speak about it because it's going to end and then we'll bring it up at our next meeting.
Kelly, is it time? No, I'm not in tomorrow.
We're done with discussion of the budget totally?
I'm sorry?
Are we finished with the discussion of the budget?
Yes, unless the board-
Or should we have any discussion about meals tax today?
Unless the board had anything else, or the school committee had anything else you wanted to talk about, otherwise that's the presentation.
We can schedule a separate meals tax discussion.
Yes, you'll need to come back on another night and talk some more about it and make some decisions about which direction you'd like to go in. Yep.
My opinion is, and we've got a lot of information, you guys did a great deal of work. I have gut feelings and I have strong reactions one way or the other, but just to get this information tonight, to absorb it into, I think I'm going to need a little time to, I guess, sharpen my opinion on it.
Yeah, I wasn't expecting any reaction from the board tonight other than asking questions and getting clear what the options are. And then clearly the board needs time to think about it, dialogue with the school committee and the AdCom. AdCom hasn't seen this yet, but we'll be presenting it to them as soon as the chairman gives us a date in two weeks. And we're also going to try to provide this presentation, hopefully with the PowerPoint actually corrected, as many places as we can. So if there's folks in the public who have a group and would like us to present it to them, we'd be more than happy to do it, anytime, anywhere.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we'll call Paul.
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes.
Chairman, first of all, I just want to thank you for inviting the school committee to this meeting this evening. I think this was very valuable and important in starting a dialogue that obviously we will continue as a committee and we will continue the collaboration that we've always had with the Board of Selectmen and we were forward to doing that. So we thank you for this valuable information. I would like now for us to entertain a motion to go into that discussion.
I'll make a motion. I'm just wondering if the council- I'm sorry.
Okay, end of discussion. Okay, roll call. I, I, I think we will actually be returning, obviously.
Right. Not on mine, yeah. I think you should.
Yeah.
Yep.
The call, as I said-
Okay, welcome back, everyone. And we'll, we're going to talk about the change of manager at CBS Scene.
We are. Thank you. For the record, John Tuer here representing CBS Scene here with Rob Christiansen, who's the new general manager. This is a change of license from Michael Siznick over to Rob. I think as the materials demonstrate, Rob has a great deal of experience mostly with The Cheesecake Factory in senior management roles, including did the Braintree Store, which is probably, I think probably one of the closest one-
Yeah, that's proven.
-to here. We're very excited to have Rob in this role. Michael had an opportunity to go back actually to the firm he was with and an expanded opportunity. So he went back and took that. And Rob was the assistant general manager and so has been on the site for over a year.
Just about, yeah.
So I would like to put through the change of manager. And we're here tonight. You've had a long night already, but since six o'clock. But to certainly answer any questions about the operation, Rob's background.
Okay.
And the Cory check did come back favorable.
Right. Paul, you want to start?
No, actually, everything's in order. No questions.
Rain?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Jim?
Yeah. I wish you well, other than, you know, it is a big issue out there with alcohol anywhere in the area and there's been issues in the past with that restaurant, with your neighboring restaurants. And if I could summer up, summarize it, it's teetering on what's next type thing. So it's, it's a little different than The Cheesecake Factory. So I'm hoping that they versed you on the past issues.
Yep, I was there for a year. I know that there were issues before I got there. And since, I know I've been on staff, we haven't had an issue of anything. We have very strict protocols in place that we've been following since there were issues. And I feel they've been working extremely well and we will continue to be vigilant and ensure that there are no issues moving forward.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any problems other than just to kind of echo Jim, other than, you know, keep hearing, you know, that big problem that was obviously before you were at the rain. So I'm sure that you're going to come right in and that's great. Anything else? I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the change of manager to Robert Christiansen?
Second.
At CBS Scene. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Good luck, Robert.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next is the road race for... George, did you want to, are you here for this? Did you want to come up?
If you like me.
Sure.
How you doing? Been a long time.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Phil Buttiff-Loco with, with the stadium. Howard Kramer with-
DMSE, Dave McGilvery Sports Enterprises. We're managing the event for them.
Great. So why don't you tell us about, do you want to start off with what you're, you know, intention?
Yep, so DMSE and Locosports has an agreement with, with the stadium to operate and manage and promote the Harvard Pilgrim 10K event on July 4th. This will be the second, second year after a successful inaugural event last year, which approximately thirty-two hundred runners ran the 10K. And as you know, the event starts at the stadium and ends on the fifty-yard line back at the stadium through, through, after running through some of the streets here in Foxborough. And I don't know to what degree, you do have-
Yep.
Okay. So the course was changed slightly from last year to adjust from a crossover with the, with the runners that were going out and then coming back in. So DMSE has adjusted the course to handle that. We reviewed the course and all with the police chief and the fire chief a couple of weeks ago and they were very satisfied as long as the event is staffed to the same degree as it was last year, which was our plan all along, that they were in favor of continuing the event.
So we, we did get something from Chief O'Leary stating that he met with, with Mr. Murphy in Hatfield and you didn't have a problem with this event at all. But George, do you want to give us any?
No, I, you know, again, the importance of the chiefs and their concurrence in it. I guess as I'm hearing it talked out, are there any conflicts in terms of, it's July 4th, in terms of the town?
Yeah, there wasn't last year, but I don't know if there's something else going on. We don't, well, we don't-
No, there were no conflicts. And in fact, last year was probably our, the most challenging, being a Sunday with church services in the morning, which we were able to work through and around, I think, you know, really probably to ninety-nine percent satisfaction. The DMSE has committed again to create a public awareness campaign that will, that will involve cable access and Founder's Day and the newspaper and all to make sure that the residents here in town are aware of the event. And that'll be a continuing, ongoing process so that it's not just the week before the event. So we'll start that process pretty soon.
And what about the health department? They, that get all checked out and everything for the health? Does the health department get involved with this?
I don't know if Bill, Bill did or not last year. We worked with the fire department as far as the fire and rescue on the, on the course, following the runners and all. We also have a dedicated medical team at the finish line that, that works with all sorts of races, including the Boston Marathon and all. And, and the chief was, was perfectly happy working with them. He actually appreciated their expertise last year as far as the running world. And again, as long as we can partner from the staffing standpoint as we did last year, he was very satisfactory. And I do have an email from him as well that he was going to submit a letter of support for the event.
Now, I guess to Linda's point, would the facilities of the stadium be used for the thirty-two hundred or hopefully five thousand people? Say they come back, you know, the lavatories and so-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, like do we need, you know, do you need porta-johns, you know, for so many people, you need?
We do. We, we actually had a porta, a porta-john facility in the parking lot for the runners last year, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Before and after the event. And then the medical staff had their own isolated tent facility, covered tent for privacy and all, out at Patriot Place Plaza. So after the runners exited the stadium, if they needed any medical assistance, they were right there for them. Every, everything from the, the tubs and all to just general medical.
We did have some on the course also and I had those pre-approved at those two locations.
Yeah, okay, great. That's what I, sort of just getting at.
I think it'd be a good idea to have Pauline-
Pauline, yeah.
Clifford.
And I don't know if she has or she hasn't, but, because I, usually we get something from Sandra that I mean, from her that says that.
You know, from the, how many porta-potties per, how many people and-
Not a problem. Not a problem. Yeah, I mean, we had fifty last year.
Hopefully a nice warm day for you, you know, just any foreseeable problems that Pauline can cut off at the curb, that'd be good.
Yeah, we'll make communication with Pauline.
Great.
You, you did bring up a good point, is there a conflicting, if there was another road race, I mean, it seems like every year there's more and more. They'd have to come through this board for a permit. And we haven't had any of that yet.
Not for July 4th. This was the first one that we've had any kind of activity at all in Foxborough, July 4th, actually.
So if somebody does come forward and we give them a permit, the mechanism for coordination, would you handle? We'd handle it at this table, but you'd be the point person to work with the Patriots and another organization?
If I was asked.
If that's-
I would say it's probably more the board, you know, to the extent that they'd have to fill out a road race permit and, you know, Kevin would say, wait a minute, we've got one already.
Right, and the chiefs would, would want to weigh in on it too because, you know, that would be manpower and things, so. But it would have to come through us because we're the, we're still the road commissioners. Any other questions?
So, yeah, may.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I jump ahead of you?
No.
Excuse me. The, so is this open to any runner who wants to?
Yes, it is.
Okay, what's the entrance fee?
Thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-five.
There is a discounted fee, right, thirty, I think it's five dollars off for early registration.
Early registration, yep.
And is it a nonprofit, like a fundraiser, or is this, you know, just for-profit run?
There, there is a charity component to it that's still being finalized, whether it's going through the Patriots Foundation or some dedicated foundations. We're still working through that, that process right now. But there is a, there is a charity component to it.
Okay, all right, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right?
I'm all set, thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
No, great.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit for the Harvard Pilgrim 10K race on July 4th on the route that's designated in the handout.
We have some better copies for you.
I'll second that motion.
Is there any other discussion?
And then just question for Kevin is, so implicit or, and that is that with further, well, with the approval of both chiefs, we have that because I didn't see that piece of paper in our packet. It was probably there in a-
Yep.
It was handed out, okay, the email, okay.
We handed it in late, it just came in today.
Okay, all right, great.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Four zero, Pauline. Thank you and good luck. Thank you very much.
Do you need the formal, that's a, that's a printed copy? I don't know if that was previously submitted, the actual application?
Do you want to keep that for us? You wanna keep that for Sandra's?
Here you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, I think Lorraine's on that.
Do you have to put it right under my nose for me to read it?
Well, this, when stuff comes in as late as it did, you're to be-
Well, and when he enters the room, you know, as late as he did.
We do have one other item-
Yes.
-under emergency conditions, um, if the board wishes to take it up, it's entirely your choice. We had a request from Five Wits for a one-day beer and wine, it came in too late to be put on your agenda, so the only way you consider it, you can consider it, is under emergency conditions, and gentleman is here.
Do we, does this meet the criteria for emergency?
Um, it does, because the event will be held this weekend, before you can meet again to consider it. Now, is that an emergency? Well, you know, more or less, it's an emergency to Five Wits.
Yeah.
Is it an emergency to you? That's up to you. Um, but it's kind of in the category, if you do make a finding it's an emergency and you agree to consider it, um, you know, I don't think anyone will contest it and say, well, it really wasn't. The emergency nature is, the alternative for the business is that they would not have this permit if it be your pleasure to grant it. Um, so it's up to you, it's your call. We explained to them that it was too late to get on your agenda, therefore it could only be taken up under emergency conditions, and you might or might not, uh, decide to do it.
Can I interject before you guys discuss it? I, I wanna recuse myself, um, if you remember, Five Wits was here several months ago, and they made a nice presentation, and they said they want to reach out to any nonprofit charity groups, um, well, I called them on that, and I think we're, we've been talking, I don't know if it was with you or-
No, it was Five Wits, Matt, DePlessis.
Yeah, um, they're looking to donate just a small thing to a wiffleball tournament that we have in March, so, I feel odd saying yes, when there's something on the table. I will sit at that chair and recuse myself while you guys discuss.
Okay.
You have, first you have, first the motion is considerate.
I'd make a motion, we consider the emergency request for the one-day license.
Second.
Any other discussion about it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I would also request, um, that the board impose, if it be your pleasure to grant this, that the board impose a one hundred dollar late filing fee, because basically, we had to drop what we were doing in the office on a day when we did not have time to do this. I mean, just being brutally honest, we did not, and my first inclination was to say, no, it's late, end of story, we're not even gonna consider it. But frankly, um, you know, we don't want, my read of the board is, you don't want us to treat businesses in town that way, so we kinda gave them the benefit of the doubt, but I do think there has to be something done for the fact that we really did not have time to process this in this manner. Quite literally had to drop what we were doing, which took time away from that presentation.
So, this came in today, Kevin?
Uh, yesterday.
Yesterday.
And it's all in order, by the way, it's, it, had it come in in a timely manner, this would've been a two-second item on your agenda that would've required, I mean, most of these things get handled very quickly, um, so it's entirely routine, I don't wanna suggest it isn't, um, but it required a bit of an extraordinary effort under the circumstances, which I'm very sure will never be repeated.
Yeah, and that should probably be a heads up to anybody else who's out there watching and thinking that you can come in at the eleventh hour. Um, the office is getting busy out there, and especially for something like this, um, that, that request on a license, if we can get it in as soon as you know about it, um, come up to the, to the hall and, um, the ladies will help you get through this, so that it gets to us in a timely fashion. So, um-
Should, should he come on up?
Sure, yeah, come on up. So, you're talking about a hundred dollars on additional to the fifty dollars?
Yeah, I think the regular fee is fifteen or something.
It's fifty, and then we, we, a hundred, and a hundred dollar for the fee.
For the late fee?
That can't, well, that can't be imposed unless you so order, but I just think, I think there's gotta be something to make the message clear that this, you know, this can't happen again. I mean, just, we cannot do this in the office, we just can't, it's, uh-
Well, can you-
And your, and your neck frankly is out there a bit calling us a, an emergency, I don't think anyone will contest it.
Right, right.
But frankly, if it were contested, it would not stand up for a second.
So, Linda, I'd just say, and we should ask questions about this, but i- if I were to make a motion, I'd make the motion for, with the extra hundred dollars, just to be clear, so. And what's that?
You've already made a motion.
No, 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 to, to hear, to hear it.
That we would hear it, yeah.
Just instead of more talk about it, I'm gonna make the motion, if I make a motion, with the hundred dollars extra.
Okay, alright. I just, um, uh, just, what is the, what is the function that, that you're doing?
So, uh, it's Five Wits, Twenty Thousand Leagues, um, uh, I, I'm not sure if you know, there's two, um, attractions there, Espionage and Twenty Thousand.
Yeah.
Espionage has been open, Twenty Thousand Leagues is basically gonna be open Saturday night, and so we're having an opening night gala. Uh, I also, um, am curating a art gallery there that night, a steampunk art gallery, and so we're expecting probably two hundred people, uh, maybe a little bit more, and, um, so we're having, uh, the BBC, the British Beer Company sponsoring food, and, uh, Blue Hills Brewery is gonna be sponsoring the, the beer.
Okay.
And it's Peter August, who's the president, who's actually gonna be bringing the, the beer, and, and, uh, he's tip certified and gonna be serving.
Okay, alright.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
No, almost it.
Ready for motion, Linda?
Yeah.
So, I'd make a motion that we approve the request for the one-day license contingent upon an additional one hundred dollar fee being imposed over and above other fees, and then just as a comment, I don't think it's really meant to be super punitive, but I, I do think it's tough for the orderly administration of the office and, uh-
I, I understand.
You know?
It's fear.
Certainly, we want to be accommodating tall businesses and wish you luck, so, there's a motion.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye.
And I just wanna make, I do certainly, John, at the board, in wishing you good luck.
Thank you. Hopefully you can come out Saturday night too, it'd be great to have you there.
I could be the bad guy, but wish you good luck.
That's okay.
We still haven't gotten up there to do the espionage thing, but it looks really cool.
And my kids have been there, enjoying it, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, I think Twenty Thousand Leagues is gonna be more fun, so.
Awesome. Great, good luck, thank you so much.
Alright, take care.
Bye-bye.
And, um, I don't-
Can we hear about the wiffleball tournament?
Since you brought it up.
Yeah, no, it's the turf stop, there's, we're looking to get, uh, about thirty teams to compete. Uh, we had one group, um, five to seven players, it's, uh, gonna be March twenty-sixth, and the grand prize is a group of fifty-five people to go anywhere in New England on a Greyhound bus, so if the kids win it, they probably go to Six Flags, if the adults win it, they'll probably go, get some noise, um, uh, but it's exciting, it's to raise money for the, the turf field.
See, I think it should be made even more interesting, like the losers get banished, like the last team, or it's a joke.
You gotta play? I will pay for, I will pay for your team to join.
But, uh, anyway, I just, I think it would make it more interesting, but that was good.
And, and just for the record, that, what he was asking for was not, it was this weekend, right?